Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, March 25th, Waschuggah City Council meeting. I would ask that you all please rise and join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Rose, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, can every council member please make sure your mic is on? Councilmember Bogart?
Here.
Councilmember Blinsky?
Here.
Councilmember Greenlee?
Here.
Councilmember Lindsay?
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Here.
Councilmember Schumaker?
Here.
Councilmember Freeman?
Here.
Sounds like all those were on.
Is this on?
We do have, for those members that weren't here previously for the workshop, we did have a workshop just previous to this council meeting, really two topics that were discussed in that are resolution that is on the agenda for this evening in regards to the Columbia River Crossing. And then we did start a conversation to be continued during this council meeting as well in regard to potentially having prayer at the opening of council meetings. And that brings us to where we are here. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Okay, hearing done. Rose, do we have any correspondents?
No.
So we're at that first opportunity for anyone from the public that would like to address council to please come forward to the microphone. Joe Harvey?
Harvey Olson, 3903 R Street, that's in its city limits, sir.
My apologies.
The CRC Bridge, there's over 160 million now given to David Evans and Associates, and presently revealed contracted monies are 2.4 million to Ron Panamanon, now a CRC consultant for the CRC, who previously worked as a Washington Department of Transportation Administrator before entering the private sector in 2011. Also CRC money is marked for expansion of a Tri-Met maintenance facility in Gresham, Oregon, and upgrades to Portland Steel Bridge, among other items. Could these items and others be the reason accountant Tiffany Couch was denied her request to audit the money that David Evans has? The cost of light rail has been published by the CRC as 850 million. Almost all projects are underestimated as to actual costs. A more realistic amount would be 1 billion plus. The CRC recently offered a compensation package of approximately 200 million to upriver companies that have products too high to go under the revised clearance height of 116 feet. The companies involved are reviewing their options. The bridge design was submitted for federal funds without Coast Guard approval. The Coast Guard recently asked for clarification of several items from the CRC. Coast Guard response as to yes or no on design is expected by September 30th of this year. The newspapers should have asked this following question: By submitting the bridge design without Coast Guard approval, did the Columbia River Crossing Bridge have the assurance that the Coast Guard would approve the current design, sold by whom? Or is the CRC playing loose with our money, hoping for approval by the Coast Guard? I am requesting the council to pass this resolution tonight questioning the light rail and/or the total bridge design, and send it to our elected officials in Olympia and Washington, D.C. The latest, the governor of the state of Washington just said, and quoted in the paper, "Decibels count in this business. It's not all harmony, it's decibels." Can we really afford a 1-plus-billion light rail at this time, or at any time? And I could've gone on for 10 more minutes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Harvey. Anyone else from the public that would like to address council? Molly, welcome.
Molly Costin, 2176 37th Street here in Waschuggah. I wish I had been able to attend the 5 o'clock workshop tonight. I understand there was quite a bit of good conversation regarding this Columbia River Crossing project. So I would urge the council to hold off with any resolution about the Columbia River Crossing. There can never be too much education. This is a project that's been ongoing for at least a decade, more than that really. And I can't say it's a perfect project. There's certainly a lot of components of it that are questionable. But we do need a new bridge, and we need to replace the I-5 Bridge. And that corridor is vital for freight traffic and industry for the next 20 to 50 years. And now is the time to build it. So I thank the council for their attention.
Thank you, Molly. Mr. Bricks?
I'm Mike Bricks, 2868 West 9th in Waschuggah. Just a couple of quick things. I've been really involved with this bridge project quite a bit, talking to a lot of people, just as a citizen. One of the people I talked to was a 20-year, can't use his name, but it was a 20-year engineer for the state of Oregon on transportation, is now working in conjunction with C-tran. He says, "Mike, the reason we have money going out of CRC for the Gresham portion was because we're going to have a whole lot more trains if, you know, if it does go into Washington, we have a whole lot more trains, we need somewhere to store them. That's why the Gresham facility's got money into it." Steel Bridge is almost 100 years old, not doing very well. If you ever ride the trains over the Steel Bridge, you notice they go slow. That's because they're worried about the structural integrity. They go ahead with this thing with Clark County, there'd be many more trains, they want to make sure the Steel Bridge is up to code. That's the reason they're doing it. As far as a third bridge idea, I also found out that Oregon Metro's 2040 plan and land use laws prohibit a third bridge. Not that they aren't wanting to deal with this, they cannot. It's against their process, against their laws of where they're going for. I realize that's not where we're coming from, but it is where Oregon's coming from. You can't have a third bridge if the other side don't want it. And those are the three main things I wanted to bring up. Okay for your time.
Thank you, Mike. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You said we continue our discussion about the prayer in the city council. I would strongly oppose that. I'm probably one of the few people you'll ever meet that is a, I guess you'd say, a non-believer, or more accurately, an atheist. I was actually getting 93 percent scores when I was a senior in high school in religious studies. I was raised Roman Catholic, but in Fort Worth, California, 1967, while I was being trained by the government to kill people, I lost my faith, became an atheist, had been my whole life. It seemed odd to me that we had actually priests in the army when the Fifth Commandment was, "Thou shalt not kill." But before I go too much further tonight, and I want to run out of time, it was on the internet today, I think it was broadcast on national television last week, and so I copied it down, so I get it because it's a direct quote. And my comments are my comments alone, not meant to offend anybody, this is just how I feel. But the direct quote on the internet today was, quote, "Ladies and gentlemen, beware of scamsters, especially scamsters in religious garb, holding the Bible. I mean, run from them. They're all over the place." Now, that quote was on the internet, it was broadcast on national TV, and it came from a person who would probably be pretty much known as an expert in that, because that was Pat Robertson, who has become a billionaire because of his TV program and his religious views, seeking money from people, probably in a lot of cases that really can't afford it. In fact, I understand he asked people that even though they were in bankruptcy, they should still stand him at least $20 a month. I think it was asked, "Well, what could opposition be to this?" Well, for one thing, there's probably 1,500 religions in our country today, and I have absolutely no problem with anyone going to any denomination, any sect, any religion of their faith. I was in the United States Armed Services, and I believe we raised our hand and swore to defend and protect the Constitution, just like Dave did or anyone else that served here. So that's your right to believe anything that you want. The country was founded to give us that right to believe anything you want. I personally would be not in favor of having any sect, any religion, anyone coming into the public's chamber and talking about their version of any religion, whatever it might be, would be, I guess, not really offensive to me, but I would not appreciate it. I would not go around doing the same to you. However, you did tell Joe Lebec today that he has five minutes, he could talk about anything he wanted. And if I chose to do so, and I'm very familiar with the Bible, I could come into this council's chamber, and I could spend my five minutes beforehand, my five minutes afterhand, in the workshop in here, and I could spend 20 minutes in here picking parts of the Bible that, well, aren't real nice, parts that are full of violence, parts that are full of vengeful god. The Bible's replete with it, I'm familiar with it, I could come here and do that. That's not good for Waschuggah. That's not good to come and listen to me talk about my views on religion, because I'm an atheist and I don't believe. I think religion has killed more people on this planet than anything else. The Shiites and the Sunnis killed each other, and they're in the same faith. The Christians killed the Muslims. I mean, we've been killing each other over religion for centuries. I don't want to come in here, and I don't want to have religious debates, and I could and wouldn't take a lot of effort to look this stuff up. I already know an awful lot of things that are in there that may feel uncomfortable to some people who are really solidly believers. That's not good for the city of Waschuggah. My position has always been, you guys really do a great job when you do sewers, water, sidewalks, curbs, parks. I think you do a great job. I like the questions you ask, I like the debates that you have. I really appreciate what you do for our city. Churches, there's 40 churches or so in this community, go to any church you want and pray to any god you want, and join any religion you want. That's what we serve our country, to give you the right to do. And I appreciate that you have that right to do it. But if I wanted to, I could come in here and be an embarrassment to myself and others, and reflect badly on the city of Waschuggah, and that certainly is something I would really not want to do. But if you bring people in from different religions and preach to me in this city council, I will probably be inclined to give my rebuttal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Anyone else from the public that would like to address council?
You know, Joe Lebec, you guys probably know me by now. I kind of agree with a lot of what John's talking about. I'm like a self-appointed evangelist. I don't talk church and religion. I sell God, Jesus, and the Bible. The reason I have strong feelings about that is, I went to church for 50 years, and the church I went to said, "You've got to know God, you've got to love God, you've got to serve God." After losing $15 million and playing it straight, if there's a God, where is he? What's he all about? Is there a God? How do you know there's a God? Well, you know what? I took a whole year and I read the Bible from cover to cover. And John's right, it's not the religion, it's God. If anybody can prove that God does not exist, give him his way, because I know they can't. If John read the Bible the way he said he did, there's 300 evidences there that God does exist. You've heard me talk about this country being free. When I was in high school, back in the '40s, a long time ago, we used to sing "God Bless America" in a public high school. We used to sing the 23rd Psalm. You don't hear about that anymore. Anyhow, one of the litmus tests you want to use on that, anybody starts talking about against the prayer part, if they can prove that God doesn't exist, you better listen to him, because I know he can't. God does exist, and if he's there, it's a good idea to find out what he's all about. And what I'm in favor of as far as the prayer is, keep it short, ask God what you want, ask him to bless you guys, to give you wisdom, knowledge, understanding, and the power, and his authority to say the words that he wants you to say. We're losing our country right now. I don't like what's happening. I really don't. And I think God knows what's going on. God's been taken out of our country. Let's put him back in there without talking religion, because it's not the religion that saves your soul. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else from the public that would like to address council? We'll have another opportunity towards the end of the meeting as well. Next item is our consent agenda. This evening has four different items in it. Our town hall minutes of March 9th, 2013, our workshop minutes of March 11th, 2013, our council minutes of March 11th, 2013, and regular accounts payable claims totaling Counsel?
I would like to have item D pulled from the consent agenda.
Okay.
And I would like to have item A pulled.
Okay, any other items?
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we approve the consent agenda items B and D, I'm sorry, B and C.
Second. There are no objections, so ordered. Item A, town hall meetings, Paul?
I was just going to say, I was not present for the town hall, so I'm not comfortable voting on the minutes. I would encourage everyone else to.
Anyone else on town hall minutes, or anyone else want to make a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to the council discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Item number D, accounts payable claims. Joyce?
Yes, I'm on the finance committee now, and is going through the bills, to this morning in fact. And I have copies I can pass down to everybody. Oh, some of these are in different order, I'm sorry. There is a dinner, this is on, yeah, it's on...
Page four, actually.
There is a dinner that is on our city's account, and it is dinner for Dave Scott, who was there for the city, Councilman Bogart, and our mayor. And then we had a dinner for Ann Rivers, dessert for Liz Pike, and Ridgefield Mayor Onslow, and city council member Messina. It is my feeling that Waschuggah city taxes should be paid for our city officials, but other elected officials from other cities, they have their own per diem or allotments for meals, and Waschuggah should not be picking that up. So I question those expenses. And also on the last page, there's a breakfast that our city is requested to pay for, which is for Mayor Higgins, Nina Regner, and past city administrator Lloyd Halverson. These are not large amounts, but I think the precedent is Waschuggah city tax money should go to our reimbursements for our officials and not for other elected officials. They do have their own.
So what's the past, Sean? What's the past habits?
I don't think we even want to go into past habits on meals and city credit cards.
Well, certain people excluded. I mean, what's the norm of...
If I could on that, the first year, actually, it was the second year I was on council, the first time I was on council in January. The Association of Washington Cities every year has a legislative conference that is in sync with the legislative session. And on the night before the conference started, there was a long tradition, going back more years than anyone could remember, that the mayor, the administrator, and whichever council members were at the legislative conference would get a private dining room and take the legislative delegation out to dinner. Now, in those days, there were three separate districts that represented Waschuggah. So there were nine, three senators and six legislators who were invited. That year, I believe, off the top of my head, I think there were a total of six who did come. The city administrator made sure that, Nabil Shawwa, made sure that the wine was on a separate ticket, which he paid on his personal MasterCard. But the rest of the dinner, for all concerned, was on the city credit card. The next year, or actually that same calendar year, the auditor had a problem with that. They didn't like the idea of us buying dinner for the legislators. And some, several years later, when Jeff Bivins was finance director, had been on council, and I were in Leavenworth for the budget trainings, we buttonholed some auditor's office people to talk about it, and they admitted that the auditor's office policy was inconsistent. It tended to change from year to year depending upon who your lead auditor was. But there was general agreement that the auditor's office was at least uncomfortable with the idea of... Now, these were certainly more expensive dinners than this is. But they were in general uncomfortable with the idea of that.
Based on?
Just that Washington law, Washington practice, Washington policy. And also, there are actually Public Disclosure Commission issues also. In this case, none of these is, probably none of these is worth more than $50. But if there is any lobbying that involves a gift, including a meal or travel, in excess of $50, it's reportable by both the lobbyist and the public official. Beyond that, you know, I would say that's kind of the end of my institutional memory on that. I'll come back to my own point of view on it later.
As far as current practice, this is the first time it's really even come up in the last, in the last three years. This is the first time that any of the legislators were available to us even for meals or outside meetings from the conference itself, so... Personally, I don't have a problem with us picking up some of the representatives or the senators' meals in those cases. I already know what they're going through. I certainly get that they have per diems as well on top of there, but we monopolized two, two-and-a-half hours of their time at a busy point in that session. I think it was quality time spent, and I think it was well worth the cost of the dinner and dessert that we've got on there. In regards to the Ridgefield ones, I'm not even, I'm not sure I even knew that those ones were going to be on there, but I would fashion a guess if we had Jennifer send a note over with documentation to Ridgefield, that we'd probably get reimbursed for that without any problem. There were a lot...
Was it Camus with, was it Camus or Ridgefield? It was Scott?
The breakfast was, the breakfast was Camus, and the dinner was Ridgefield.
But it was the Camus people that were on the tab?
Yeah, in regards to the breakfast, there is, once a month, the two mayors and the administrators get together for a long meeting. This time it was breakfast, it's been lunches prior, and each month, one hosts the other one. So where you may see one for last month, you won't see one for this Thursday, because it's back to Camus's turn.
Why doesn't everybody buy their own meal?
We could do that as well.
One more thought, I want to say, the legislators receive $90 a day for expenses. But that's their per diem when they're in session, so...
Dave?
First of all, thank you for your vigilance. Secondly, a point of information, if I may, are the per diems that our people operate under based on the idea that what the per diem is paying for is not necessarily to feed them, but to pay the difference between what it would cost to feed them at home, which they're responsible for anyway, and what it would cost to feed them in the environment in which they're working? When we travel, for example?
We use the federally published per diem rates when per diem is applicable. I'm not sure how those numbers are derived.
That's the theory behind those per diem rates, so if you're using them, that satisfies my question.
And we use them down to the individual market that the per diem is attributed to, in this case Olympia per diems.
The feds do the same thing. And that's eminently fair, because if you ask somebody to go to Olympia, it's going to cost more than it is to go down to Nader's down here on E Street. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The only kind of minor difference there is that the federal numbers, there are federal numbers for Portland Metro, Seattle Metro, Olympia, but Wenatchee gets the same rate as Moses Lake, and they're not really comparable. So the state of Washington actually uses a modified per diem, so that, for example, when you go to Leavenworth to go to the finance training, the lodging costs in Leavenworth are well in excess of what the rest of eastern Washington is. So it's modified on that basis, but that's the only... And then the other piece, I would say, is that if this were a business filing a federal tax return, there's no doubt in my mind that this would qualify for the business entertainment deduction. I don't think that's the issue. I think it has more to do with the use of public funds.
I have to agree with you. And I thank you for raising the issue, because I think it's an important one. In terms of using city funds to encourage availability of state legislators by asking them to have breakfast, lunch, dinner, whatever with us, I think we're using city funds for something that they're committed to do by their electoral office and oath. So I'm inclined to agree with you. I know it's not generally been done that way, but I think, given the circumstances of all, at government on all levels at this point, and the economy, I think this may be the time to introduce that reform.
Brett?
I think this actually cries out for a policy, rather than have, after the fact, people, you know, have problems... people, you know, have problems with it. Maybe we need some kind of written policy on the use of city funds, you know, when meeting with legislators, other city officials, when you're out of town. I, you know, I didn't charge per diem, because, you know, I was obviously at the dinner, so I didn't charge the city an extra per diem for that, or breakfast, because it was provided with the package at AWC. So, I would just suggest that, you know, we need some kind of written policy on this. Do we have anything on this right now?
Yes, we absolutely have an extensive policy on travel status and everything that you're discussing, and everything that occurred is consistent with the current policy of the city. But the current policy of the city could be amended, absolutely could be amended, to be more specific in terms of prohibiting certain things or limiting certain things. And we could certainly bring that to a workshop, so that you could look at those parts of the policy and give guidance and take action to make changes, if you would like.
I would like to see the policy that the city has on entertaining, or I guess entertaining other, other people, of what, where the parameters of that is. Because, again, elected officials are there to represent us. We shouldn't have to buy them dinner. And they do have an entity that would pay for their dinner, so it doesn't necessarily have to be Washougal.
Dave?
And I agree with Councilman Boger that this is not the time to haul somebody up short on this. You've raised the issue, let's deal with it with a policy. And I think people that have done what they've done so far have done so in accordance with current policy. If we want to take that as an issue, let's revise the policy and expect compliance after that.
I'm fine with that. I just think there should be something clearer about this.
Based on that, may I move to pass on that particular issue? Is it?
Item.
Item D?
Just as a point of clarification, counsel, I don't believe that that specific payable is part of your packet this evening. That's for a future one, that the finance committee was looking at this morning. So it will be, I may be mistaken, but Jennifer-
That is correct.
Yes, yes, you know you're right.
Jennifer?
Yes, am I, do I have the understanding that potentially the Ridgefield mayor and city manager will be sent their portion of the bill? Is that correct?
I think I'll just take care of it. We did not buy dessert for Ron and Phil. We bought four desserts for the part of the party, that was our responsibility, which was the mayor, myself, Councilman Boger, and Senator Wright Rivers. And then when it came, the waiter brought eight spoons, and so everybody had some bites. And just in the interest of full disclosure, I wrote all the names down on the receipt.
Yeah, I see that, okay. And so, okay, so this was a legislative dinner, correct? It's a legislative dinner?
This was dinner the night before the legislative conference began.
Oh, okay. And so we were discussing Washougal projects?
Washougal projects? Yeah?
Yes, absolutely. We were, this is when we presented correspondence to Representative Pike and Senator Rivers about our priority capital projects. We talked to them about our Public Works Trust Fund loan applications, of which we have three, and as you know, it's at risk of being truncated from the state budget. There was some reporting about that recently in your AWC newsletters. So, we handed them our portfolio on that information. We walked them through that. We talked about some of the details of the project. That's partly why Senator Rivers was so articulate, as you recall, at our town hall about our sewer project. We also talked about items of general concern for cities, the state shared liquor revenues. We talked about what the real impacts of losing that revenue are for our community. Tried to give anecdotal evidence to them on a more intimate and individual basis. We talked about our transportation needs out on Highway 14. The other communities joined us for the dinner. They did not have any packets. I believe that Lloyd had some information for them, but Ridgefield did not, I don't recall, have any information.
Lloyd is not on the list.
Yeah, I, he was at, he was there with us.
Oh, did he pay for his own meal?
I don't know who paid for the other half of the table. We paid for Mayor Guard, myself, Councilman Boger, and the senator.
Mayor, I just want to be clear, that was the whole motivation for having the dinner. If we didn't have substantial issues to discuss with them, we would not have had the dinner, or we certainly would not have submitted any expense to the city for it.
Correct.
So this is a working dinner, essentially? Okay. And the Ridgefield mayor and city manager were also, had the ear of the senator and our state representative as well?
No, because we didn't allow them to do that. They tagged on. They had nowhere else to go for dinner and weren't heading anywhere for dinner, so we allowed them to tag along, but it was, it was our show as far as the representatives were concerned.
Interesting. I'm inclined to agree that, you know, after the fact is the time when we have these discussions, the expenses come up. I think it's valuable that our finance committee members are questioning these items, and I think it promotes a healthy discussion. I really think it does. Take a look at the policy, see what it says.
Mr. Mayor, a point of order?
Mm-hmm.
There is a motion on the floor?
There is a motion. I haven't heard a second yet, but-
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any further council discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain, because my hotel bill and mileage was on there too, for that same trip.
Moving to new business, Agenda Bill 9-13, adopting a resolution amending the personnel policy, Chapter 2A, adding a new classification for information technology network and systems administrator. Dave?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, before you is a proposed resolution that will amend Chapter 2A of our personnel policies. Specifically, it adds a new non-represented classification called IT network and systems administrator. We reviewed this recently at work session. I would point out a slight difference from what we talked about last time to what is before you this time. As you recall, we had tentative ranges for both of the positions. The represented position, which is the lower level position, is handled in a different way. Jeanette went through and updated the compensation analysis in looking at the comparables. And for the represented position, which isn't part of this, but just for your information, we had told you tentatively it was a range 14. That's actually going to go down to a range 13, the way the comps worked out, so a slightly lower range. On the non-represented position, which would be the leader of the team of two, as opposed to the NU4 range, the comps are showing that we need to be at the NU5 range, and that's what's in your packet. And so the difference in that, when you take the two of them, is very close to a wash in terms of the financial impact. And just as a reminder from our conversation the last time, the funding for this is all, is all accommodated within the existing budget. It doesn't require additional appropriations of any kind. And so the recommended action is to read the resolution by title only, and then to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we read the resolution by title only.
There are no objections ordered.
A resolution amending the city's personnel policy manual, Chapter 2A, with the addition of the position of IT network and system administrator.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post the resolution in the usual manner.
Second. Got a motion, a second, to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. Council discussion? Dave?
Just one question. In looking over the salary range and adding in benefits, are we competitive with total compensation in this area?
I believe, well, on the salary, we are, I believe, competitive with the average of the comps that we looked at on the salary side. In terms of what the overall total compensation is, I believe that we are competitive with the other communities. I don't believe that we have a significantly richer benefit package or a significantly less generous benefit package than any of the other comps.
And how would this compare with the private sector, total compensation-wise?
I did not do that analysis, so I don't know.
Okay. Other questions from council? I've got a motion, a second, to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Takes us to Agenda Bill 10-13, adopting a resolution regarding the Columbia River Crossing. This is an item coming back from the workshop. We had some discussions at the workshop in regards to the draft resolution, some of the wordings in regards to the draft resolution, some of the actual recitals in the resolution. Counsel, I'm going to turn this back over to you all to continue that discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we table this discussion.
Dave?
I believe I was recognized.
You were.
In that case, I'd like to move that the council vote on the resolution that was put forward by Councilmember McDaniel, as an abbreviated version of the, of the resolution that we had a chance to review over a leisurely dinner this evening.
So your motion is to pass the resolution as put out by Councilmember McDaniel?
As advanced by Councilmember McDaniel, yes.
Do we have, Rose, do we have another copy of that? I've got a motion, is there a second?
Repeat the motion, please.
The motion is to pass the resolution as put forward by Councilmember McDaniel.
But didn't we have a motion to table?
Oh, no, he was, he was ahead of me.
Excuse me, okay.
And this motion hasn't been seconded yet?
No, I did second it.
Oh, okay. Mr. Mayor, I may move we table the motion?
Second.
Let me stay caught up here on votes.
Point of clarification?
Mm-hmm.
Motion to table does not have a future date. Is there a future date for consideration?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Is there a future date for consideration of the tabling of the motion?
Would be the 15th?
I believe another motion would have to be, it would have to be brought up in another meeting, or if the motion fails, then you can move to postpone consideration to another meeting. I'm sorry to invade your province, Mr. City-
That's also my understanding.
Which motion are we tabling? Are we proposing to table? Point of clarification, please.
At this point, Councilmember Shoemaker made a motion, which was seconded by Councilman Freeman, and I move to table that motion. And Councilmember Lindsay seconded. So the motion on the floor is to table.
Is there a discussion?
But not debatable.
Right.
Hey, I've got a motion and a second. To answer your question, though, before we get going, it would be our practice to bring it back to you at your next workshop, so it would be April 8th. Unless somebody wants to put another date in there, we would bring it back to you at the next available meeting date.
Thank you for the clarification.
So I've got a motion and a second to table the previous motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Real call?
Councilmember Boger?
No.
Councilmember Klinsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenley?
Aye.
Councilmember Lindsay?
Aye.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
No.
Councilmember Freeman?
No.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to state that I voted no on that, hoping it would be defeated, and I would have brought a motion to postpone consideration to April 8th.
And do you have that in the formal motion?
Actually, the motion to table passed, so-
So we're done for, with it for tonight?
We're done with it for tonight.
Okay. Do we need any?
Do we still have a motion on the table to table Agenda Bill 10-13?
Well, that's, that was going to be my question. Do we need an additional motion in regard to the resolution itself that we were dealing with during the workshop?
I'll move to postpone consideration of that to April 8th.
I believe that's in our rules. Unless, unless the date is specified, it's automatically brought back to our next workshop, I believe.
Hasn't been tabled yet, so it's still live tonight.
Well, but there hasn't been a motion.
It has been tabled, has it not?
I heard a tabling of this, the motion on this resolution. Exactly. We still have this resolution, draft resolution that we spent the majority of the time speaking about. Do we need a motion?
And I just moved to postpone consideration of that to April 8th.
Second.
I've got a motion, a second. Council discussion?
I would, I think it's inappropriate tonight to consider the new resolution particularly, because the public hasn't had a chance to review it. It hasn't been posted on the website. The press hasn't seen an advanced copy of it, as far as I know. I just think there needs more, to be more public airing of that. I'm not sure we need another workshop on it, though. Why don't we just, you know, I think we need to devote our workshop time to more clearly defined issues that affect the city of Washougal. And I think we just go and discuss it at a, at our public hearing or public meeting on the 8th, without a workshop.
My only concern with that would be if you want to, after all of you have time to read this, if you want to change any wording, any of that, that we're able to capture that in, even if we only talk about it for five minutes, 10 minutes at the workshop, so that time in between workshop and the council meeting, we can get-
Well, could we just time the workshop? Because I don't want to spend another, of course, I missed half an hour of the meeting, but I, I don't want to spend more than 30 minutes on this at our workshop time next in two weeks.
I agree.
If I could just point out, Mayor and counsel, on April 8th, we've scheduled a joint session. We can try to make some, with Camus, on three particular items. We can try to provide five, 10 minutes at the end of that, and perhaps our, your colleagues from Camus-
Why, want to chime in, huh?
Will?
Well, I was thinking that it was going to be considered at the, at the meeting. It's a joint work session, but not a joint meeting. So, I think you could accomplish both. I think we could accomplish, yes, it is, we'll be here. I think it could, you could accomplish both in the context of the meeting and talk it through, and then vote, where we wait until the 22nd.
We'll attempt to take care of it during the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, other council questions, comments? Dave?
Point of clarification, please. Is not the second resolution, the abbreviated resolution, merely an extract from the original resolution?
I don't know.
I would say that, sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I would say that some items, yes, were pulled from either the first or the second draft of the resolution, mostly from the first resolution that was emailed out. I did, I have to say that trying to develop a resolution or, you know, work in this fashion of the emailing, you know, back- of the emailing, you know, back and forth to the City Administrator, everyone's different ideas, it's, it's not productive, and I, I don't want to do it again, because I don't, I don't agree with the whole process. I, I like the discussion, I like having, you know, all of our, our opinions aired in a public meeting. But there are some things in, in the resolution that I came up with that I think are more simplified and more Washugal-centric, and just simpler, simpler statements, so you may or may not agree, Councilmember Shoemaker, so take a look at it, take some time.
I did, I agree wholeheartedly.
Oh, okay, good.
I'm in, I'm supportive, I'm in support of your resolution. It, it appeared to me to be extracted almost exclusively from the original resolution, and therefore I was challenging Councilman Boger's position that the public hasn't had a chance to take a look at this.
I would like the public to take a look at it as well, though, I think it's important, I think it's important to, to have it, lots of time to work on this, and lots of input.
Since it's your name on it, I agree.
My name is nowhere on this resolution, not yet.
Oh, I think in the minutes it is now. Okay, other, Paul?
I, I just wanted to greet Jennifer, I'm frankly a whole lot better when I can discuss things with people than if I'm trying to do it by email.
Again, the email was just to get your ideas for what you wanted in, you all wanted to lay this in, or, excuse me, some councilmembers wanted to lay this in as quickly as possible without having other meetings in between there, so...
My comment was actually meant more generally than this specifically, that I, I place a great value on, on face-to-face discussion rather than trying to work it all out by email.
Angel?
I just want to say thank you that we realized that there's a great time restraint, that's the only reason we decided to have it, to have this addressed back-to-back, plus the fact that we discussed it at our town hall, and so I'm not in disagreement that we should, we should have open discussion, I just want to say thank you that we're going to get to deal with this immediately at our, at our next meeting, because it is a time-sensitive issue, that's, I'm repeating myself, thank you.
Any other council discussion?
So both are coming back next?
So far only one, but we haven't taken the second vote.
Well, I, if, if, it sounds to me like there's no consensus, or there's not, not much support for the first resolution to come back, so why don't we, why don't I just withdraw my motion and we just take up the one that Councilmember McDaniel introduced tonight?
Does that mean we can't discuss some of the issues from the past one, then?
Well, you can discuss in the context of Councilmember McDaniel's resolution.
Second.
It's not a motion, I'm just withdrawing a motion.
I second that. So would everybody in agreement that the original resolution draft that was put towards us is kind of off the table? Is that where you're going to?
Yes.
Everybody's good with that?
Correct.
I'm seeing nods for the most part?
Yes.
Connie Jo, I'm not seeing a nod from Karen, I haven't seen anything from Karen saying yes, okay.
Nodding.
I'm going to take that as consensus, the motion is withdrawn, that item is done for, for the evening. Which brings us to, back to public comment, any members like to comment to council? Mike?
Hi, Mike Briggs, 2868 West 9. Just a curious observation, and I am certainly no expert in this, but Mr. Boger or Mr. English might offer a, some views. When you have a council that is emailing information back and forth about city business, but the public is not informed of the emailing, is that a violation or a potential violation of OPMA?
If they were, if they...
Correct.
Well... Could that not be construed as a serial meeting when the third party is being used?
No.
It depends upon how it happens. Councilmembers can email each other about city business so long as they don't email a majority of the council. And even though when they, they might, I might email a council member and say, you know, we're talking about an issue, and I'll say, well, I also talked to Councilmember X and Y, and I think this way, and when you email a fourth council member, now you do have a public meetings issue. But just emails between single councilmembers and they don't discuss what they're, what they discuss with other councilmembers, that's okay, it's the majority, there's no majority of the council deliberating, that's when you don't, that's, that's what, what, in my experience, and the city attorney can correct me, but it's when they, when a majority deliberates together or deliberates serially together. And then, but even an email to Councilmember Scott, if Councilmember Scott, you know, unwisely forgot his training and said, well, I, yeah, that's the fourth one, and so that's what we're going to do, then you have a problem.
And you're okay with city attorney?
Yeah, I think that's exactly correct, but I think here, the emails were from councilmembers to city members, and he was saying, well, here's what someone else said, and he was affecting the circle meeting.
Did you do that, David? Thank you very much.
Any other members of the public that would like to comment to council?
Man, I'm not used to seeing all this stuff. One of you guys told me that I was...
Joe, we need your name and address, please.
Yeah, the name is Joe LeVac, 2682 Northwest Norwood Street. I was told early tonight that I was full of hot air. If you think I'm hot, full of hot air, anything I've ever told you was the truth. I've tried to generate millions of dollars into this community, and I was totally ignored. Now I'm trying to help my community, and I'm totally ignored. But anyhow, going back to that prayer thing, there's over 30 churches in this Clark County that's praying for you guys to make the right decisions, and that's worthy of listening to. If 30 churches are willing to pray for you, what I'd like to do is to have the newspapers, when you guys make a vote on that, find out who's voting for the, for the solution, for the resolution, and who's voting against it. Because if the public doesn't know where their, their elected officials stand, they're not being told the truth. And there's a lot of stuff going on in this county right now where the truth is not being told, and I'm not going to stand by and let it happen, that's all I want to know, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
One quick question, Mayor, Harvey Olson, 3903 R Street. The, I picked up one copy out there on the table, Business Bill Number 10-13 for the agenda of tonight, is that the resolution that you're going to deliberate on, on the 8th, or is there another one?
There's another one.
Oh, is it out on the table?
No, it will be, and added to the packets for the 8th.
No, I'll just throw this away, thank you.
You bet. Anyone else that would like to address council? Okay, seeing none, going to Mayor's report, I have just two items, one is the reminder, as Mr. Scott has mentioned, on April 8th, we do have a workshop here, joint workshop with the city of Camus and their council, 4:30, not 5 o'clock, 4:30 in the afternoon here in these chambers. Our hope is that we will be able to complete that by 6 o'clock and still have a few minutes for any items that we may need in, in case of workshop just for our body. If not, you'll have a little bit more break, hopefully for, for your dinner break. Topics that we have on there so far are the fire consolidation with Camus, animal control, and our joint court, court system. There may be other items that get added on there between now and then if, if we think that they, they need to be put in there for both bodies. Other than that, the other item that I had for you was your continuation of your discussion in regards to prayer before council meetings, and I'll just reopen that, I think previously in the workshop, we did hear some information from City Attorney English in regards to some case law that seems to go both directions. So we'll turn that matter back over to council for any council questions, discussion, questions of Mr. English.
Mayor, as far as that goes, I really, I see that Connie Jo left, I really would prefer that we, she was the one that brought this forward, I'd prefer that we held off on that until she was present.
Second.
And the formal motion, Brent?
Yeah, I guess that was a motion, and, because it was seconded.
I've got a motion in a second to postpone the further discussion on prayer. Council questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember comments? Brent, we'll start down at this end.
I was late today because of Vancouver considering some refinancing, particularly of the Hilton Hotel, and one of the things that came to mind, and I think I asked earlier, I would like to take a look, or at least have a summary of, of the city of Washugal's outstanding debt, and also have some indicate, because interest rates are, I can show you a chart here from the presentation, are lower than they've been ever, basically, since the Great Depression. And I just wondered if we're looking at the potential of refinancing additional debt, I know we've done some since I've been on council, but I'd, I'd, and also like to know what, what money we owe as well, just generally.
If you, we can certainly have Jennifer recirculate it, you just got it less than a month ago in the fourth quarter update, that had that in there as well, all of our obligations, their maturity dates.
Interest rates, okay.
Dollar amounts, everything's there. But we can have her reset that out as well.
All right.
It's a document, she keeps up to date. Other items, Karen?
Oh, I didn't.
I just wanted to mention that Local Connections is meeting tomorrow morning at 8:20 at the Camus-Washugal Chamber, which is in downtown Camus, kind of across from the Post Record. The blood drive is in Washugal on Thursday. I don't know what time slots are available, but they will be there from 1 until whenever at the fire station. I usually give blood, but I think it probably, given the level of my cold, I will pass this time. The Community Coalition, also known as Unite, meets Thursday afternoon at 4:30 over in the second floor of the Social Services Building. That's all I have.
Yes, Rotary, the Camus-Washugal Rotary is again this year doing their Young Women in Action, and they added a program of young men in action for the 5th grade girls and boys, they're separate programs, it's an amazing program, the Hathaway kids are marvelous, and I think it's making a real difference in our community.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Dave?
Yes, please. I just wanted to comment briefly on the history of prayer and public meetings in the United States. It has a long and distinguished history, stretching back to before our founding, and including every level of government. On the other hand, I'm concerned that in this litigious society, we could get sued over this issue, and I think that the people bringing that suit would be wrong, I'm concerned more about the cost to the city. So I will be interested in the discussion next week to see how we resolve this apparent conflict.
Two weeks. Three, likely four weeks.
Fun flies when you're serving time, doesn't it? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. I would entertain a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Got a motion, a second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we were going to have the executive session?
Oh, I'm sorry, I went right past that. We are, we are not adjourned, I apologize.
Move, move, we reconvene.
We do have a, we do have an executive session, I'm going to estimate it's probably going to last upwards of 30 minutes, potentially.
I hope not, but potentially.
I hope not either, regarding property acquisition.
Right, and if, if I could just mention for the record so that Rose can have it in the minutes, Councilwoman Freeman mentioned to us at the break that she was feeling very poorly, and that she would last as long as she could, and that she would leave when she felt she needed to leave.
We're not expecting any action to follow on the...
No action to follow.
Yeah, no action to follow, so there's no reason to stick around.
Okay, if we could turn off some recording devices? We're going to stay here.